All right, why don't we go ahead and we'll call the meeting to order at six thirty-four. First item on the agenda is to make any adjustments to the agenda. Okay. Hey Bruce.
Hi.
We just started.
Okay.
We're good. Okay, no adjustments to the agenda. One thing I will say is last month's meeting was illegal because we didn't have a quorum. That was my fault. So the only thing we have to do is re-vote on the minutes. I did let everybody know that it was in attendance. So, we can approve, look at the meeting minutes from April. Everybody need copies? Give you a minute to look them over. If you see anything, you can change them. And whenever anybody wants to make a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Do you want to, reading notes, take a look at these before we... So we have a motion on the floor that was seconded by... okay. Okay, are we ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion is passed. Here citizens, we have our new town manager here, Rick Chambers. Glad to have you as our town manager. Yes. Okay. We have nobody here for here citizens unless you have anything you want to say.
I do not, no.
Okay. So, new business. Initiate a discussion regarding subdivision regulations. I did send everybody sort of a primer on subdivision regulations. It's come to my attention that there's some issues in town with road cuts, a lot of subdivisions going on. Personally, my opinion is that we should develop some basic subdivision regulations. It's not zoning, basically subdivision regulations. They regulate the subdivisions of properties into two or more lots. And you'd have a, like for a two-lot subdivision would be a minor, and then anything larger would be...
It's state regulation. It's a state?
Well, it would be, the state has laws governing guidelines, but yes, it would be something that, you know, we would develop them, have hearings, planning commission hearing, then go to the select board, and then I'm assuming would go for a vote.
It does.
Yes.
We did it once before.
Yeah. That was how long ago?
It was in the eighties.
Eighties? Yeah, I think it was before my time, but, I mean, what, they're not as controversial as zoning because it doesn't tell you what you can or cannot do on your property. It's just develops guidelines for like road gradients, lot configuration.
Draining.
Setbacks, and Stephen, if you have any, yeah setbacks.
What are the issues that, or what are the concerns that's going on right now that has led to this conversation? Like what's the...
Well, I think there's been a lot of subdivisions going on in town. I know up on Healed Road there's a subdivision where the driveways are draining directly onto Healed Road, which causes a real issue in the winter. And also, I think, just not knowing what development is going on in town, we have no idea.
Up in the Nap Pond area.
Yeah.
There's some, just like the Wild West up there.
And if you do have some guidelines, those people would know how to approach that as well.
That's right.
When they're building. And then it wouldn't cause so many problems.
We would be able to, concerning the ones on Healed Road, you know, a driveway comes down a steep slope onto the road, and it just goes right to the road instead of having a swale at the, between the driveway and the road to divert at least the majority of water that's going to come off of there.
And silt and dirt and, you know, running.
You know, sheeting of water in the winter in freezing.
Right.
Washing salt and sand away. So often they go out in sand and then the snow turns to rain and it washes all the sand away, creating a hazard for everybody that's driving on the road. And the subdivision regulations, when it comes to the driveway regulations, will, will take care of that in advance. They have to build it to the plan and the standards.
There are, there are standards and guidelines we can go by. We don't have to start from scratch.
Oh, yeah, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. I mean, there's several towns we can pick and choose.
Which seems most appropriate.
Yeah, yeah, for our town. Another thing, drainage, like from individual lots, you know, in my line of work, I've seen properties that have been developed and, you know, they've dumped all their drainage just from the roads and parking, whatever, onto neighboring properties.
Right.
And, and, you know, it's caused quite a bit of problems for the neighboring.
Filling people's cellars.
Yeah.
So does this like beef up the, like the, the current access permits that, because I know when Brendan came and looked at property I have on Chapman Road and to, like, and just like, okay, we don't need a culvert, like, it's good. So...
That would be part of it. Yeah. And I think access permits should probably be updated too. Because I don't think they have, like culvert sizes. Now it's a minimum fifteen-inch for a driveway.
Yeah.
I think the other, the other thing that, I'm not exactly sure until we figure out what we want to do, but, like the situation with the, the trailers in Proctorsville, you know, where we have sort of that, not the ones across where the dog folks are, you know.
Oh.
I mean...
On one oh three?
Yeah. No, on one thirty-one, where...
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Where we have, you know, people living in caravans and things. I'm not sure if that comes into play or not, but, but, you know, at least having water and sewer.
Right, right. I mean, that is an issue, is overseeing it. I mean, the planning commission would basically do the review. You'd have like a sketch plan review where you could address issues, you know, where the developer, the property owner would come in, and they would know right away, you know, okay, this is a viable plan or not, and then they can continue on.
Because right now, as I recall from the selectments meetings, we basically have two, two parties that are living on the lot. There's no subdivision at all.
Right.
And there, it's constant bickering about what can be done. And it seems like subdivision as a bare minimum.
Right.
If we're gonna have two parties living on the lot, that they would, they would have to meet certain standards.
Right. They'd have to do a survey, have a plot plan, and show like access and connections to sewer and water.
That's often the big bugaboo is people don't want to have their plots surveyed, you know, because of, because of cost, but...
We have to consider the greater good as well.
Yes, it is.
Right.
They then know where their boundaries are. They know the size of their lot.
Right. Yeah, if you have trees coming down, you don't, you want to know whose property is responsible, for instance.
So we'd be, like, this would be more, you can subdivide, no problem, but like, hey, when you, you're gonna put in three lots, like, we need to make sure that the driveways make sense and all of that.
Right, like the fire department, ambulance service would review it, you know, and make sure that they can access driveway gradients.
Room to turn around.
And it would work well, it would work with wells and septic systems.
That's right. I mean, you can, if you went and get more complicated or more restrictive, you can, you can kind of, from what I've read, you can sort of configure the lots, have them like they could, you know, maybe give them points or something for clustering houses.
Yeah, you can do community septic systems, community wells, but the thing is, all this, all this is really gonna do is document what's being done. And right now...
There's nothing.
Very little documentation.
Right.
And, you know, so, yeah.
So if you were to purchase a home that had two bedrooms and you wanted to add a third bedroom, but you don't know what the septic system will hold, I mean, that would be something interesting or necessary to know whether the septic is...
Well, yeah, they're not going to tell you they're doing that, for one thing.
Well, in other communities, the septic system has to...
Yeah, well, yes, the state has tight control over well placement and septic's and...
And how many people it can serve.
Yes, but as far as...
It's usually based on bedrooms.
Yes.
On bedrooms normally, yeah.
The towns used to oversee that. Like, I think Rich Speck was our health officer, and he would approve any septic or well locations, but the state now does all that.
Oh, okay, so that's not our purview?
Nope.
Okay.
And they're, they're strict.
Okay.
Stricter than probably anything that we could write.
Okay, then.
Yeah. And a lot of it too is sort of being proactive, is, you know, if we keep getting more development. It seems like a lot of the development is, is happening up in the rural areas, you know, house by house or a couple houses and...
Yeah, you know, somebody...
Is the majority of it happening through subdivision?
Um, that's a good question.
Well, the one that, that has the town, meaning the, the town administrators are the most concerned, is the five lots going in on Healed Road, which are, two houses have been built and three more are in the process. And one of the driveways is scary. Of course, no, they, and the, the fact is, and Steve, you'll bear this out, I'm sure, is not every piece of property in Vermont is developable. There's ledge, there's slopes, and that, that just, it just doesn't make sense to build on it. We have no way of controlling that now. They can do what they want. The driveway, the driveway permit that has to be issued by the town is probably the, the best backstop we have at this point. But subdivision regulations will address the, the slope on a driveway.
Is there, is there a way to do it? I mean, just thinking of like, oh, like, if it's not a subdivision, this, this subdivision doesn't do anything. Like, a way to like beef up even, even like building permits for the town or beef up those, those access permits to, to kind of address the stuff that wouldn't necessarily be a subdivision as well?
A road cut permit, it only deals with as the driveway or development road meets the town road. It doesn't do anything like...
Past that.
Past that.
Yep.
Yeah.
But the, but the subdivision would?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Well, you know, if you start out, if you start, and Tim was talking about this earlier, if you start out very simple and see what, what you can, what works, and then you can, you can always add something to it. Because it can get, subdivision permits can be pretty sophisticated. And one of the ones I've been using lately is bridle burrows. And they're, it's very sophisticated in terms of what you can and can't do. And so, we're not there yet, but at some point, as we see how this works, you know, we, we may want to adopt more, more stringent regulations. I mean, because they get into the slope of the land, you know, where you can, they have percentages for driveways, percentages for buildable slopes, all those kinds of things, you know, can be incorporated. So you can make it as, you can make it pretty much as sophisticated as you want, you know.
If you start out with basic safety.
Yeah.
Access for police, fire, and ambulance, that will give you...
That's right.
A way to, you know, to begin what, how, how wide things need to be, what the slope is, what the turnaround or availability for turning around.
And I think one of the really good things about it is that it's, it won't happen right away, but, but it's like, if, if you treat these, these guidelines as pro, as being proactive, what will happen is when people are starting to look at land with their realtor, the realtor will say, well, you need to understand, you know, you need a driveway permit, you need well separation from your septic system. And so as they become more educated, we'll end up with better, better regulations.
Well, ultimately, the town of Cavendish, in this instance, is responsible for the land, isn't it? Is for protection for fire and, and policing and finances. I mean, if somebody is in one of the subdivisions and a fire starts and you can't, and you can't put it out, I mean, it could...
Could be an issue.
Could be a huge issue, for instance, but...
Another item is that say, we don't have subdivision regulations and, I mean, that, or, it could open up the town to a lawsuit, say if there was...
You're not protecting the citizens.
Yeah, like the fire department wasn't able to get there, or, I don't know, I mean...
Most towns for fire departments, the only, the only regulation that I'm aware of is that they, on cul-de-sacs, they can't be any longer than twelve hundred feet. So you can't, in other words, a driveway or a cul-de-sac can't be longer than twelve hundred feet in most communities. And in terms of, as I understand it right now, if somebody's building a house, they typically would not go to the fire department. And, because you could have dry, dry well, dry, they can have ponds with hydrants in the ponds. I mean, so the fire department, the more they know about what you're doing, the more they can, they can help you in terms of determining if it would be a hazard. The other, the other thing that doesn't get mentioned very often is, is schoolchildren, because if, if they're, if the kids have to walk a long distance, there's no turnaround for a bus.
Right. That's an interesting point.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, I guess...
Would this, would this limit any of our push to develop housing? And would that, would that become stringent and constrict that potential?
I don't think so. It might actually help if you're going for funding. A lot of times they like to see subdivision and zoning regulations. So I guess from here, I mean, do we want to get a consensus? Should we kind of push forward with this? Now, how does everybody feel?
Want to put it to a motion?
Put it, we could put it to a motion.
Yep, let's do it now.
Okay. You want to make a motion or...
I'm making the motion that we go forward with drafting preliminary subdivision regulations.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. So, probably Rick does think of next Monday, running this by the select board, getting on the agenda.
Yep.
And just get their input. Because it won't go anywhere if they don't, if they're not on board. So then I guess it's like, how do we go about this? Do we, like, have public forums? Or, I mean, it's changed a lot since, remember we did zoning, we had like spaghetti dinners and, but that was like before social media. I think, you know, you, we definitely want to have the public kind of be aware.
Of course, yeah.
Of course, we'll be discussing it at our planning commission meetings, so...
We do want to make a preliminary, like, figure out what that, what the basic bullet points would be, and then open that up to a public forum after that?
We could do that. We could get the regional planning commission in next month to kind of go over.
Give some guidance.
Guidance, some samples, sample regulations. I mean, it could be real simple. I mean, this, we don't have to make this into a, you know, a motion picture at all. We can just keep it simple, you know, keep everybody informed and, yeah, just think it through. Because we'll have to, you know, it has to be administered. Yeah, so...
I think one of the things that you might want to consider, and that is that, is trying to determine early on where you're gonna have paths of assistance and paths of resistance in terms of the community. And I think that, you know, like, for example, you're saying keep things simple. I mean, I think, I think if you can be proactive and really try to anticipate what, we know some of the characters in town and what they're gonna be saying.
Mm-hmm.
I think if we can sort of anticipate what some of those things are, and then, and then basically whether it's through diagrams and saying, look, okay, you want to sell some land here, I'm using it as an example. You want to give a parcel of land to your kids?
That was a big issue.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Huge. Which, and the thing that I found was interesting about that, because I remember it well, was the people that, that aggravated the most, when you looked at where they lived, they didn't have any land to deed to anyone else. But it was still a psychological thing with them that, I can't, you're making it so I won't be able to, or someone won't be able to spin off a lot for their one or two children.
Yeah, so I think if we, if, if there's a way, as you, the board can identify what you think some of those paths of resistance are gonna be, and just, and really hit those head on from the very beginning, not wait to, for people to...
To react.
To stir, stir things up.
Right.
You know?
Yeah, I think like for a simple subdivision, a two-lot, it could be very easy. You know, wouldn't be onerous or expensive, or it'd be a pretty simple process.
And I think what's gonna happen is, I think that there will be a movement to connect this to zoning. And so basically, we really need, and maybe it's, the regional commission is very clear about what, what zoning is and what subdivision regulations are.
Right.
And take it out of, I mean, take it out of the hands of the board and just say, this is, you know, have them be the experts. And this is, these are the differences, and this is, this is what zoning does, this is what subdivision regulations do. And point out how it, how it actually protects your neighbors as well. I mean, I, it, it just has to be, I think from the very beginning, just being involved in these kind of things in other communities and in Cavendish, we really need to get the ground running and be very positive and not take any crap in terms of, of, you know, people throwing red herrings about, you know, in, in the, in the process, saying, I can't do this, when in fact, you can.
Right.
That's all I have to say.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And they're from, it's not limiting what you can do with the land necessarily. It's more a focus on safety, fire, fire department, and environmental stuff with runoff and...
That's right.
Protecting the town's resources where if you wanted, if you had a big plot of land, you wanted a, a mile-long driveway to this piece of land out there, possible, but maybe you need approval from the fire department to, you know, put in something or making sure that, that driveway is accessible, is that...
Well, if it's a subdivision.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's just a single piece of land and you want to build a house on it, I mean, there's...
You can do anything you want.
You can do whatever you want. And yeah, that subdivision, it doesn't control what you can do, I mean, in terms of the use of the property.
That's zoning.
That's zoning.
Yeah.
So...
Good to make those points clear.
Yes.
In advance.
That's right. So I guess moving forward, probably see if we can't get the regional planning commission for next month's meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And then, I mean, a target date, I mean, March meeting for a vote? I don't know, that might be too soon, or...
July?
Well, for like the town meeting next March of 2024.
Oh.
I don't know, what do you think, Stephen?
I think if, if...
If it goes through.
If the selectmen support it.
Yes.
At this next meeting, which, which my guess is they probably will.
Mm-hmm.
If they support it, I don't think it's too early. Because I think that, in fact, if, I think the problem you have, if it gets dragged out too long.
Yes.
I, I think it will get worse, this situation will get worse.
Yeah.
And there'll be more misinformation fed into it than, than you really want.
Okay.
Yeah.
Rick, do you have any opinions on subdivision regs or...
You know, it's sometimes, it makes my job and most people's jobs easier when you have some sort of regulations like that. Because as of now, like you were talking about the driveway, we can walk there and say, this is what you have to have, you know, your driveway's fine right here. You need this size culvert, but from there back, I have no idea. Like even in, they have, you know, they say your driveway has, it has to be thirty feet wide. That way the vehicles can get in and out. We don't even have that either.
Yeah.
So, you know, when I can go to somebody and say, no, this is what you need, and this and this, and follow these guidelines, and, you know, and you're good to go, then every project is a lot smoother from the start.
Sure. And we could tailor the regulations to our town. I know a lot of towns have like twenty-four-foot wide roads, which is pretty wide.
Yeah.
You know, you could go twenty probably, depending, but...
It's, the truck is, you know, fire truck is like eight to ten feet wide, but a car is only like five and a half feet to six feet wide. So you can, you know, for cars, it's one thing.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the, the other thing that, you know, just on, on driveways, you know, what, what Bruce was talking about, if you have a slope coming down and meeting another road, what you, you basically at least have a twenty-foot flat area so that the car is not sliding into the, into the other road. So if you have a, you know, let's say you've got an eight percent road coming down, it needs to go to like two, two to five percent before it attaches to the, to the other road. And that's where you would have, if you needed a culvert, that's where you would put your, your culvert in. I mean, it's, it's pretty, pretty common practice. I mean, it's, what we're, what we're asking for is not like, wow, you know, I've never heard of that before, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
It's normal practice.
Yeah, yeah.
I know, it's Jeff. Jeff, are you still with us?
I am. How are you doing?
Hi, good, how are you?
I'm good, thanks.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't, did you, I didn't get your vote or anything about this. What's your, how do you feel about all this?
Yeah, I'm, I'm obviously in favor of further discussion and exploring it. I guess one of the questions I have is proposed enforcement mechanisms. I mean, you know, it's, I look at this kind of similar, in a way to the junk ordinance, who's gonna do the policing if you, if you want? That's a question we'll have to answer almost as quickly as we answer the, the overall, what's the point? So I, I'm in all in favor of moving forward. I just think those are some key points we need to look at as well.
Okay, that's a good point, the enforcement.
Right.
And one thing, like, how do you, someone has a big piece of land, super steep driveway, it's been there for decades, and now they want to subdivide. And do you, is it something, okay, you, in order to subdivide, you need to make that driveway accommodate? Say you had two entrances on your property, both of them bad, and now you want to subdivide both of them. Both those entrances have been there forever.
Subdivision, well, it's, it's about subdivision. It's not about individual properties.
No, but as soon as you subdivide.
Oh, then you need to...
That driveway existed.
Need to meet the regulations.
You need to come in compliance.
Yes.
You need to be in compliance.
So I mean, that's where I could see where, hey, this is grandma and grandpa's property, we're gonna subdivide it for the kids, and, you know, oh, it's gonna cost me a hundred grand to dig in this driveway up the, up the hill?
Mm-hmm.
That, that's just a...
Yeah.
Individual things can be grandfathered sometimes, but it would take a focus, focus examination of the property, right? Depending on, depending on the situation.
Is there any leeway? I think sometimes I've seen some regulations where, you know, there's certain restrictions, but, you know, the board could vote to kind of overlook those.
I guess that would have to be in the, in the...
I guess that would have to be in the, uh, in the.
Yes.
Just like part of the.
But if it's a hazard, if it's a dangerous driveway, then yeah, you gotta.
You know, and, and it's like in, I, I don't know if this is still the case, but. Uh, I think in Ludlow, the steepest drive, the steepest road they had was thirteen percent. And, and it, and it's, and they can't use it in the winter for fire trucks. So I mean, you know, if you've got something that's, that's inaccessible for fire trucks or for ambulances or whatever. Then I would think that that would be a pretty strong case for you saying, you know. We understand this, this is a trail that you had in or whatever, but once you, for public safety purposes, once you subdivide. Then you're gonna need to meet the standard.
Yeah, to give you an idea, Route one hundred south going up Terrible Mountain, that's twelve percent. That's pretty steep.
Yeah, I think that's what I said. I think the steepest road in Ludlow is thirteen.
Yeah. You know what it is?
It's going up to Trailside.
Route sixty-six?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that one. Yes.
Yeah, I think it's the one that goes up to Trailside. I mean, I don't know if they still shut it off in the winter.
They do.
They, they do.
Yeah, well, when it's, when it's, uh.
Yeah.
Actively snowing or, or ice, they divert the traffic to, um, to base lodge.
I mean, you know, this is, I mean, basically, you know, it's, it's an environmental issue, but it's, I think more, to start with, it's a public safety issue. You know, and if they, I think if we, if the town approaches it from that standpoint, you know, we don't want anybody getting hurt or losing their house or whatever. I think if you, you know, approach it from that standpoint, I think you can be more reasonable. And the other thing is too, is that, you know, if somebody has a hundred acres, um, you know, it's, if, if. And I, I've seen this quite a few times actually, where you have, you have a logging road. And they say, well, we've already got a road. Well, you don't really. You've got a, a logging trail, which is not a road. And so, you know, the planning commission, you know, if, if, if you, if you do a slope analysis and you look at, you know, where your slopes are five to ten percent. Where you can get roads in, the planning commission can help them just say, okay, well, here's an alignment. So you can get, you know, up to your property at, at ten percent or something like that. I mean, we can be proactive on things like that.
Oh, sure. Yeah, we could, you know, help folks say that.
Yeah.
Don't have the resources to.
Yeah.
Hire a professional. I mean, they'd have to hire a surveyor, but.
Right, for sure. And, and an engineer probably.
Yeah.
One, uh, I, I see a lot in short-term rentals is like private home, state doesn't care what you do. You can have, you know, you don't need your licensed electrician and all that. As soon as you rent for one night, you need to be up to code.
That's right.
Um, and the way I see that, okay, you're operating business, you're, you're trying to make money, you need to be up to code. Um, with this, if it's something, hey, if you want to, you know, if you're subdividing and you're giving that land to a family member. That could be some way that, um, you know, it, we could, you know. I don't know, I, I, I guess that's where something, hey, I wanna give this land to a family member, something like that. And now we need to be up to these certain standards, um, that, I don't know, that's where it seems like pushback could, could come from where. I don't know, if you're doing this big development or you're, you know, you're selling this land for a developer, um, I don't know, something that could.
Right. Well, if it's just subdividing into two lots, you know, that would be just a minor, so that would get a lot less review. And, uh, I mean, it may not even require a hearing sometimes with a minor, right?
Yeah.
Is that something like where, okay, I subdivided in two lots. And now I got my one main lot. And now next year I'm gonna do it again. Next year I'll do it again.
No, it's within a five, it's, it used to be, I don't, I'm not as familiar, but it used to be, um, within a five mile radius. It's treated as one application.
Got it.
Mm-hmm. All right, that's a good point. All right. Any other discussion on that? Okay. Well, I guess we'll, uh. Go on to number two, continued discussion on affordable housing. I guess at this point where we need to get regional planning commission, they have a study that's going on. They, they hired a professional to conduct a study for the whole region. So I'm not sure like how much they're gonna really drill down on Cavendish and our needs. I think maybe at this point, we can kinda go with what they're discussing. But it would probably be of big help if we kinda outline lots or properties that might be.
Would bring it to their attention.
Yes. But yeah, we have to be careful, cause, you know, we don't want people to say, what are you doing with my property?
With their permission and all too, I suppose.
Right, I think, you know, we can identify them and then go to them and see, would you wanna have this?
This is what we're thinking and wondered.
Yeah.
If you were, you know, in concurrence or.
Right, and if they're not, then it ends right there.
Then, right.
Yeah. So I know we had a couple of, uh, properties.
Well, one of the ones that, you know, I, I think I mentioned the last time is, uh. The Old Town Garage Site.
Right.
That would be an easy one relatively because we own it.
Mm-hmm.
It's on Town Water and Sewer.
It's on Town Water and Sewer. The other one. That has potential, depending on what happens with the fire department, is that building.
Is the fire department building?
The fire department, yeah.
Oh, the fire department.
Yeah.
I, I had understood that that building was not to be used for any other purpose. Is that still on, when it was? Cheated or, we might look into that.
Yeah, well. When you, you know, you write clauses like that into, into, uh. Purchase and sales agreements or whatever, you know, to think that, that something will never change.
Right.
Is just foolish.
Right, so anyways, worth looking at to see where, um.
The other sp- spot is up behind you, what's the, what's that little street next to you? No, not the lane, the other one, Bran.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I don't know the name of it. I, obviously I live next door, but I don't.
I can never remember the name. It's a, it's a one syllable word. It's like Bran Street or something.
Yeah.
There's, it's about on Town Water, but it's, it's sewer, but it's not far from it.
Right.
It's, there's.
And there's Woodell's property, which, right, is, is it still Woodell's? Where you go, you go down the lane, you cross through the field, and then there's a small meadow. Probably put like five units up in there.
Yes, uh, higher up or in the meadow itself?
Both.
Yeah.
Well, the meadow, I think is flooded.
Yeah, the meadow, the meadow floods periodically.
But it's, but it's in the next, the next level up.
I've got, uh, these plans here, could we mark up?
You know, I, I, I think one of the things that's, I, I read the, the, the RFP and, and the proposal. And I think where we could be most helpful is not only on, on land, but on buildings. Um, because, and I don't know if you saw Margot's thing today, where the governor just approved. That you don't need any, if you wanna do a duplex, you, you don't need a, uh, or a mother-in-law's apartment. I don't think you need a permit for that anymore. So one of the things that would be helpful, you know, if the firm's coming all the way from Burlington, is if we could identify. Uh, buildings that have some potential for either mother-in-law's apartments, live workspaces, those kinds of things. Cause there are, I mean, just within this little cluster, and going back to what Bruce said, you know, um. Because housing is at such a premium, um, you know, I know there's been discussion and Tim's been involved in it. And John Sadik's been involved in, you know, doing plans for the, for a park of the Old Town's Garage Site. But, you know, one of the things that we might wanna consider, if we're gonna look at that site potentially for housing. Think about that much money that you would put into it for a park and just enhancing what we have right around the. This is a nice piece of property, you know, right around the town hall there, if we wanted to enhance it as a park. And then that would, that would serve the needs for the village.
Sure.
You know, so I mean, I, I don't think, I mean, I know there's been a long discussion about that site being, becoming a park. But we also, we should, you know, not discount what we already have here.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah. How, how many units do you think could they?
Four.
Four on that? Yeah.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not sure. It depends, you know, it really, you know, if, if you look at. You know, since, since getting this RFP, I've been just driving around, uh, like especially in Chester. And looking at the, the, there's the little townhouse unit, small townhouse unit near the fires, the new fire station. You've got the two little townhouses that work for seniors or for startup families, um, uh, next to the green. I, I think if we can come up with a module, again, that we think might help. When, when the consultant comes in, we can direct them, cause it's like you said, Tim, I don't, how many towns are in the region? I mean, I, it's a fifty thousand, fifty thousand dollar study.
Right.
If there are ten towns, which I, I think there should be, then that would be ten thousand dollars for each town. And if you figure that the consultants are twenty-five hundred dollars at least a week for one person. You can start dividing it up and we're not, they're not gonna be spending a whole lot of time on our town.
Right.
So I, I think your point is well taken, you know, as much as we can help them. While identifying buildings and sites, uh, I think it's, we'll get a lot more out of it.
Okay. All right, um, that sounds good. Do we wanna, oh, well, before I get to that. I know there's, in Proctorsville, Depot Street, if you go over the bridge on the right, past Frank Providence's old house.
Yes.
There's a couple lots there.
Yes.
Um, which might be, it might be, I don't know if that's in Flood Plain or not, but. But that might be worth looking into and then I think.
There's a couple houses there that I, I thought were abandoned, but there's people still living in there.
I guess so, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and then behind the Catholic church, is that? Okay.
Well, one, I'll just have one more point. There, there's, there's a book out, it's, uh, it's Julie Campoli, Campoli's book. On density, visualizing density. And one of the things that I think, again, I think this would be helpful for the consultant. If you look at the density, the existing density in Cavendish, and the existing housing density in the villages themselves. They're actually quite small lots.
Yes.
So, you know, there could be a possibility of, you know, they're less, some of them are less than quarter acre. So I mean, if, if we can maybe not throw out the possibility of, of subdividing some of the lots that are in the village. Which have access to water and sewer. That may be a possibility as well. And who knows, if people are living in their, have lived in their houses for fifty years, and they have a little extra land. They may wanna look at it as retirement income or something like that.
Sure, sure.
Are there ways to, like, I know there's probably a lot of money in for developing housing, but to. Incentivize that building of a mother-in-law apartment or, or something like that, or even. Like, I know there's a, a bunch of short-term rentals in, in Cavendish where, you know, they could make thirty grand in a year with that. Or they could make maybe twelve with, um, uh, with doing full-time. And maybe you, you know, you're, the cost it takes to run it, maybe you're netting twenty-four. So like, is there a way to kinda close that gap that we could do instead of, you know, putting. Million, two million into building five units, you know, take that and say, hey, we wanna, um. You know, Ludlow's, Ludlow's looked at it for their, their rental thing and housing and, um, like, there's different. Different programs to basically like, hey, let's, how do we get some of our existing housing stock into more residential? Um, and I know, I'm sure there's, there's money to do, to build the housing, but I don't know if there's money to necessarily do that, but. You know, if you got ten people to do that, that's, that's ten units where, what would it cost to build that?
Well. The, uh, brick house I own right down here has, uh, two rental units in the back that are actually pretty nice. Um, the house has the potential of being two nice apartments and. I, I'm not trying to line my pockets, but I will sell that for, uh, to be converted into, into housing. The whole bunch, you know, the whole thing. And.
Yeah, it's almost like, like an incentive for people to.
Yeah.
Rent locally.
I don't wanna own it anymore. I mean, I would like to put it in the hands of something like Stewart Property Management and let them do it. Like we did on the, you know, on the, uh, on the Proctorsville Green.
Right.
You know, you never, you never hear of any problems because they take care of all of them.
Well, here's a problem, they take care of it pretty quick.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've never heard that one problem ever.
So would I, you know, just in Cavendish, he'd, I think that, that we could. We could pick up anywhere from, uh, seven to twelve dwelling unit, units. Without, well, it's gonna be difficult, it's always difficult, but with relative ease. Um, the thing about Proctorsville that is much more attractive is you could walk in Proctorsville and get things. You can walk to Singleton's, you could go to Murdoch's, Crow's Corner, I guess it's going to open up again. In, in some capacity, the post office is right there. Not that we don't have a post office in Cavendish, but the store is gone. There's. And, you know, the, the store became a vacation home. So.
Another property in Proctorsville, it's, it's close to Town Sewer, but the sand pit, the old Drummond Bugle Corps on Twenty Mile Street.
Yes, yeah.
That's a possi- there are some wetlands there, but.
That. That has, that has, water and sewer.
Oh, does it?
Yeah, it goes up to the, where the, well, you have to extend it, but not far. The main goes right up the, uh, right up Twenty Mile Street, I believe. There's fire hydrants there.
You talk about an incentive, if you have to put in a mound system, you can be talking thirty to fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, oh, at least.
At least, yeah. And so, you know, when you, when you, you're talking about incentives, if, if by extending, you may wanna comment on this. You know, the cost of extending a water line or a sewer line, you know, if, if you're talking about, you know, a mound system. Or some other multiple wells or something like that, you can, you can go through that much money pretty, pretty quick.
Oh, yeah. Right.
I think Bruce is right. There's water, but I believe there's sewer.
That could be. While we're coming up with, uh, these ideas, uh, house capacity. Waste water plant.
I think we have plenty of capacity. Well, for what we're talking about, nothing.
Okay.
Huge.
When, when we, there was a meeting, um, I, I don't know how many people are aware of this. There was a meeting with the, um, the regional, the Chemo Valley Chamber of Commerce. The town manager, Brendan, um, the Wyndham Regional, I forget what it's called, the Housing Trust. Used to be Rockingham area. There was a meeting and basically, we were, we were thinking that. We were thinking about Proctor's, uh, Proctorsville and Fletcher Farm. And they basically, their, they, their criteria is twenty units. That's the minimum, is twenty units with water and sewer. So, uh, and Fletcher Farm was at the meeting. And Fletcher Farm basically, um, well, it was, it was kinda thrown out because we, we were outside of the village boundary. But to me, I think that needs to be revisited. I mean, it's not that far and it's, it's all flat.
So the minimum was twenty, not the maximum, the minimum?
No, the minimum was twenty to make it financially feasible. Yeah.
But that wouldn't be on Town Sewer, would it?
Is that say, is that feasible with Town Water and Sewer or is it?
Yeah. And they want Town Water and Sewer, yeah.
Yeah. You have to run it, it stops at the hotel.
Where would they, where would they develop, where on Fletcher Farms land would they?
Well, basically where, um, where stepping, that, that land around Stepping Stones and the big, the big house that used to be the.
Rockside, yeah.
The what?
It's called Rockside. It's empty right now.
Yeah. And, 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 and we tried to get them to go take a look at it, cause, I mean, it has the capacity for quite a few people. And they, they weren't even interested in looking at it.
Who was it?
The, the Wyndham Housing.
Wyndham Housing Trust.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, to me, that's, it's, I mean, 'cause we know we have water and sewer going to Castle Hill, right?
Yeah.
So it was just, you know, beyond that, um.
To be a different town.
What's that?
If we, uh, stepping, that, is it, that parcel still in Cavendish?
I think Stepping Stones is just barely in Cavendish, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's right on the line, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, the, what'd you call it, the Rockside, I always call it Canterbury.
Oh, that's the one next to it.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, towards Cavendish, Proctorsville.
That's, those are, those are underutilized buildings, both of them.
Oh, yeah.
And, and the other, I mean, right, we've got the, the old hotel, which is the clinic. That's some, and it's got some land with it, um, then there's all Peter Van Cheek's, he doesn't, I don't think, I think he may have sold them, but all those barn buildings, um, that are behind that rental unit he used to have. So I mean, you could probably, you could probably get at least five to ten units, just in that little cluster in the village. With parking, you know, and that's the other issue, I mean, we're talking about, you know, probably, we, we, right now, I, I, we don't have a very strong parking regulation, but it would probably be, have to be like, uh, one, at least one unit, one, one car per unit, so that takes up a little bit of space. But I, I, I just think if we, you know, if we put on our creative thinking gaps, and I think we, there's, I think there's probably more opportunities than we're, we're aware of, um, we just, you know, and, and can help be proactive and help the consultant out, and at least, 'cause I think if, you know, it's like they say, you, you need to have things that are, that are, that are plan-ready. It would be great if they came and we said, you know, here are ten things we want you to look at. You know, rather than, than, you know, coming here, visiting, driving around, waving their arms and, and looking at properties, you know. So maybe if we could, if maybe you could talk to the regional and find out when that first meeting is, and so, when they come, rather than it being a drive, a windshield survey, we could say, these are the, we know there are five areas or ten areas, and these are things we want you to focus on right away.
Okay, would you, uh, like, for private land, uh, privately owned land, would we go to the owners first before we?
That's a tricky one, you know, it's like, um, you can get in deep jet, deep trouble if you don't. But by the same token, it's like you, you really cut off a lot of creativity if you do. I mean, if there was a way, if the planning commission, and I think you probably need to run this by the selectmen as well, if the planning commission said, you know, we're, we, we're blaming on the regional commission, and say the regional commission is looking at different land use, you know, opportunities in the villages for more housing, for children and families, and just put it on them, and say, is it okay if you're contacted, you know, so we can identify who the property owners are, and then have the regional commission.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Keeps it separated, right, yeah, that's a good idea.
I think people would be more open to having the conversation if you said, oh, this is what we have too, not like, hey, we're thinking about housing where, you know, that could be, you know, a ten-unit apartment building for, you know, I don't know, young families, and, you know, or it could be, you know, just a two-unit, um, one-bedroom units, or, I don't know. But having what that might look like would, would probably be unofficial.
And like I said, there's enough examples, like the, the, this, we've got the Proctorsville Green, you know, projects in, in Chester. Maybe there's some issues, projects in Ludlow we could point to, and, uh, or maybe, you know, maybe the other thing is, is you have, um, what was the name of the, the property management company?
Stewart.
Stewart Property Management, maybe, they become part of the conversation, and they have a, they tell the town what works, you know, and what doesn't work, and why they've been successful, if that, if that becomes an issue. And one of the other things, you know, I keep saying the last thing I'm gonna say, and it's not, but, but one of the other, one of the other issues could be, when I've worked in communities with controversial projects, you can't, you can't have a quorum. But one of the things, there could be people on this commission, the planning commission, that could be designated to go meet with somebody on a Saturday or Sunday with a cup, over a cup of coffee over their kitchen table. I mean, you, you get much better results if, if, if you don't put people in a public forum, but, 'cause, you know, people are afraid of public speaking. And it's just, if you could, you know, one of us could, I, I couldn't, but one of you guys could just sit down and, and meet with them over coffee and say, look, you know, do you have any interest, if you don't, tell us now, and we'll take it off the table. But if you do, then we can, we may be able to help you, you know.
Okay. All right, maybe after the meeting, we can just kinda color in potential spots on these maps, that way we have it.
And do people know, as he mentioned, about, um, individuals who might have an apartment that they could present as part of this plan as well, or a space, like the in-law apartment, for instance? Would that be a part of this, or not?
It could, the, the, we, we have, we have, uh, known houses with dual occupancy that are not.
So is that, that is, to bring the numbers up, um, that they, they wanted twenty minimum or something, maybe we could be creative?
Well, that's like twenty in a spot.
In a spot.
Oh, in one, so that's their target, is to have it easy, all in one spot, but we don't have, we don't have that kind of a?
Well, we don't, no.
Luxury to have that kind of thing, so we.
The sand pit, I remember, they were proposing forty houses up there years ago.
Yeah, so, I just wondered if that was a possibility to add those kinds of things.
Not visually shocking?
No.
You know, like, what is that apartment complex doing in the middle of town?
Mm-hmm, I mean, it is a little, you'd have to run sewer, probably sidewalk, definitely, yeah. All right, so I guess now, yeah, after the meeting, if we could just kinda mark on these plans, and then I'll contact Jason. It kinda, I guess the ball's in their court, I mean, we can give them our input, and then see when the meeting's gonna be.
I think we have to push for Cavendish, because it's not, uh, it's not a likely spot for, for their, for this plan. Being in the valley and having, you know, it's, it's not a big center where we can put up a couple of buildings.
Yeah, we're limited.
It's individual things along a river, a railroad, and, and a highway, and so on, so.
You know, the other, the other thing that's gonna come into play here, and I don't know what the relationship is with the school board, is the school.
Yeah, that's so up in the air.
What's that?
That's just so up in the air right now.
Oh, I know.
You know, it's just, it's like, you know, it, it really, it really has an, has an effect on future planning. The, it's, the, 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 the talk is to close the school because it only has sixty-plus students, which is about half-capacity. And here we are, trying to bring families in. You know, I, it's like, they're tugging on one end, and we're tugging on the other.
You know, is, is there, is there a mechanism, and, and Rick, maybe you know this, is there a mechanism for, for, um, for school boards to meet on issues like this, or are they, I mean, they seem to be almost like completely separated, in my understanding of things.
I think they are com- pretty much completely separated.
Really?
Not to say that you can't have a school board liaison on a board, you know, um, but.
They're, they're working on that, there, there's some powerful forces in action to keep that school open, and separate from the TRSU. It's happened in other communities in Vermont, and they're, they're working, working towards it.
'Cause that seems like, that issue alone is as important as everything else we've discussed.
It is, it is, but, you know.
'Cause it's if the schools close, then that kinda takes the wind out of our sails somewhat, yeah.
I have a pretty good, good feeling that they're going to, um, be able to get out of the TRSU, form their own district with Ludlow and Mount Holly.
But would the TRSU still own, don't, don't they own the building, the school?
You know, I'm not entirely sure, I can't believe.
We owned it one time, right?
Yes, oh, yeah, we own the library still.
Oh, okay.
Rich made sure of that. I, I just don't see legally, it'll, it'll get political, how they could steal the school from us. I, I, just, you know, it just defies logic.
Right.
I mean, they didn't give us any money for it.
Oh, they didn't?
No.
Oh.
They said, we're, we're gonna take this over now.
Well, that'll be a liability for them, I mean, it's just like the, the Black River High School is.
No, they, they wanna move their offices in there.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah, yes, stated, not, not rumored. Talk about an empire.
Wow, we gave it.
This, this gets bigger and bigger every year.
Is there an appetite in this town to put up a twenty or forty-unit apartment building? To get, to get those numbers for kids specifically to reach, you know, the, with the housing trust saying a twenty minimum, they, they know what makes financial sense.
Those that are concerned with pers- per pupil cost, um, realize that you spread the money out over more students.
Well, no, just like with, like, the housing trust, like, they're only gonna do projects of twenty or, or more units, like, is there an appetite for that, like, I know in Ludlow, people want it, but they, they don't want a building.
Not in my neighborhood.
Yeah.
That's why Tim's mention of what we're calling the sand pit is, uh, so attractive to me.
Well, I think that, you know, the thing, the, the sand pit, it's visually, it's not that offensive, right? I mean, in terms of, it could be screened properly, and?
Oh, yeah, I mean, uh, full disclosure, that'd be my property butts it, I mean, I, doesn't matter to me. And, uh, my neighbors, they don't really overlook it, it, it's buffered by trees, yeah, you don't, 'cause you have blood terrace. Yeah, Fred, blood terrace, I mean, it's pretty, it's kinda secluded.
You know, I, I think the reason we were able to get the sixty-six units approved at the castle was, you know, most, there are some people that probably don't even, have never driven up there. You know, 'cause you don't really see it, so I mean, if it, if it, if that's a site where we could make it so it's not as intrusive as some other sites.
Would that road be approved up to the castle?
Oh, yeah, that was, that was approved, Act Two Fifty, yeah.
That wouldn't be too steep for a fire truck.
The Gill Apartments is, is in my estimation, a nice, um, representative of the type of community that, um, could, could work. There are a lot of individual apartments in rows, and then there's the one building.
Yeah.
I mean, a combination, I mean, that, that's not unattractive, I'd say.
Yeah. Okay. Does anybody else have anything else to say on that?
Not at this point for me.
Okay, item six, old business, we have to, since we didn't have a quorum, uh, we have to, for the enhanced energy plan, we basically have to redo what we did, vote on it. Uh, review the final edit, edits of the enhanced energy plan, and we need to vote again on whether or not to accept the final draft and begin, and begin the hearing process, so.
You want a motion?
Yeah.
Because you could talk about it till the cows come home.
Oh, I know, I let it over.
It's like, throw it out there, and, and, and it's going to go through many, 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 many iterations.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept the Enhanced Energy Plan chapter?
I'll make that motion to accept the, uh, final, called final draft.
Final draft.
Final draft of the Enhanced Energy Program, and good lo-, good riddance.
Yeah, okay, second.
You'd have to put that in.
I'll second.
Okay, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, okay, so we'll, uh, we'll have the hearing next month at our July meeting, we'll have that first, and then close that hearing out, and then have our regular planning commission meeting.
And it will be sparsely attended.
Yeah, probably. Okay, um, election of officers for one-year term. We have a chair, vice chair, secretary, uh, Montescutti Regional Commission representative, and an alternate. I guess we'll start with chair, I mean, I'll put my name out there unless anyone else wants to.
So I nominate you, correct?
Yeah, you just have to nominate somebody.
I nominate, uh, Tim Calabrese to be chair.
All right, and then that needs a second?
Somebody has to second, and then you vote, after discussion, if there is any.
Right, all right, any discussion, be happy to do it. Yeah, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that motion is passed, uh, vice chair. I nominate Bruce, unless anyone else has any, oh, no, I can't nominate, I'm the chairman.
I'll nominate Bruce.
Okay, second, okay, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, secretary, anybody wanna throw their hat in for that one?
I, I wanna, I wanna nominate Shirley, not, not because she's the only woman, and they tend to make, boards tend to make the women secretary, but I just feel she'd be capable, um, and, and do the, not only capable, but do the job exceedingly well. Any second, or, no, you have to ask that, so I made, I've nominated Shirley Clark.
Are you okay with that?
I'm not really interested, if there is another person who will step forward.
You have to do it for a year.
For one year?
Yes.
And you have?
What's even better is when.
I would do it if, if you didn't wanna do it.
Okay, what's even better on these boards is when you're not present, and they elect you, and they elect you in absence.
I, I will nominate Noah.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, um, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Maybe you can follow me next year.
Do, so minutes get sent to the town for them to, draft minutes, typically?
Uh, yep, they get, well, they come to the next meeting, and then we vote on them, and then.
So we don't publish draft minutes before the next meeting?
No, nope, and typically, I'll go ahead and submit the minutes to the town, and then they put them on the website, all right, I gotta.
Approved minutes.
Approve the minutes, yeah, we approve them, and then they.
And then they go to the town, okay.
I gotta go back through, who, who made that, see, for chair, I know Bruce made the motion, and then Shirley, did you second it?
I'm.
Or the second for the chair.
The chair, okay.
So I can just, I can just watch, watch the video of this and, and draft on minutes?
You could, you know, and there's even, um, uh, you can, you probably know better than I do, there's, like, I think on your iPhone or whatever, you can have like a recording where it dictates it, and. I mean, it'd be really long.
Yeah.
But you don't have to, like, be super detailed, just kinda get to the point. Okay, so vice chair, who, uh, who nominated you, Bruce?
I did.
Okay, Shirley, and then who seconded, was it?
I think I did.
You did, okay. So that's the important thing, you know, like, who made the motion, who seconded it, okay, secretary, uh, let's see, Shirley, you made the. Okay, second by, who seconded?
I did.
Okay, Miguel. Okay, so now we're at the Montescutti Regional Commission, and Shirley, you had expressed interest.
Good.
Yeah, that was, that was great, I think that's.
You nominate Ms. Clark for that position.
Okay.
You always call me Ms. Clark.
He must come back, I mean, even though I've told him not to.
Okay.
Many times.
All right, um, okay, then who's gonna second, okay, Noah, second. Okay, alternate.
I nominate Miguel.
Okay.
I can do that.
Um, okay. Man, second?
I will second that.
Okay, all in, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Do they generally attend the regional planning commission meetings?
No, I haven't. I was an alternate.
I've attended two.
Yeah.
One on Zoom and one in person.
You can do Zoom?
Mm-hmm.
Good.
Yep, and they have lunch, they give you lunch too if you show up in person.
Yeah, pizza or sandwich.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, great, well, this is good. Took care of that business, review correspondence. I don't have any, uh, any other things anybody else wants to discuss?
Oh, I just got a text from Jeff. He was in and out with reception.
Oh.
He said that he voted to accept the final tra, draft of the energy plan.
Okay.
Just so that's on record that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we.
He was involved.
We didn't even think of nominating him for anything.
Oh, I know.
Yeah.
Well, he, he's flying all the time. That might be tough for him.
Yeah, I think I'm, I think I'm a little bit.
Oh, there you are.
We're talking about you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I'm about thirty seconds from taking off, so I apologize for, yeah, sorry.
No problem, yeah.
Glad you're here.
Glad you're here, Jeff. Appreciate your input. Um, okay. Let's see, Bruce made the motion to accept the energy plan, right?
Yes.
Okay, who seconded it?
I can be down as a second for that, yeah.
Miguel, second, okay. All right, any other business? Okay, motion due.
I have one, one thing.
Oh, yep.
Um, I, I would just like, I would just like to keep two things on the agenda. Um, I talked to Rick about it. Before Brendan left, we had talked about the speed signs in the villages and he, he had told me that it was fait accompli, that we had the money set aside, you know, for reducing the speed in the villages. You know, I'm talking about the, the flashing.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so I, let's just try to, it's, it'll be on the select board agenda as well.
Okay.
I'd like to keep it on the planning commission agenda.
Sure.
And then the second thing is, and which is worse than the first, is junk yards.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
Um, I'd just like, you know, just, just to keep.
It's just.
Just keep it out there.
In respects to the signs, is that something they're gonna want input from us as far as placement or?
We don't.
The design, like.
No, no.
Because you have the one at Woodstock that, you know, as you're entering Woodstock.
I think it's more like the ones in Chester.
And then like the Chester, they have the one that you're entering Chester.
I think, I think, um, I think he figured out we needed four.
Yep.
And the money, he said the money, he had talked to the, um, the highway engineer. I'm not sure all this happened, but he said that he did. He talked to the highway engineer and it was approved. And the last thing he told me before he left was, yeah, we'll get it done, so I just wanna, just keep it out there.
Okay, that's really the select boards, uh, per view.
Yeah.
The planning commission doesn't get involved in road signs.
I mean, but if, if one of you came to a select board meeting and say it's important, I mean, I just.
I'd be, I'd be saying it's important as a citizen.
Yeah, okay, well.
Yeah, I think it's important because I'm out there on one thirty-one just right after Carlton Bridge and they treat that as a straightaway. Soon as, soon as they come down from the dump, going out of town, they treat that as a, as just a straightaway all the way to Pam Lindberg's at the curve there.
Ridiculous.
It's just, they just, they just floor it.
Same two cars.
And then coming in, as soon as they round the corner, corner from Pam right there and head down through that little straightaway, up into town, it's, you know, it's crazy. It's forty miles per hour, you know, and the speed sign is back there right after the curve.
Yeah.
So I don't know where they're actually thinking of starting those signs per se.
I don't either, but we have, but with summer coming up and the kids are gonna be on the streets, we have twenty kids just in the village of, of, not even including your kids, how many you got, a brood, right?
Yeah, I got four.
Four.
So I got a quarter, quarter of that number.
So, yeah, so I mean, it would be nice if we could get something done relatively quickly after school gets out.
One of the, uh, things about, about those flashing speed signs, they, they have proven time and time again to really work.
They do work?
Yeah, they do work, they work very well.
Especially the ones that flash blue?
Yeah, uh, yeah, because.
I'm not sure any sign you put like that has to be done through the state though, correct?
Yes.
It's a state road, so the state tells you where they want them.
Yep, and, but the other thing is, as far as sign placement goes, uh, when I was working with Rich here, it was unusual to have people come in and request signs because the, the kids, their horses, their tractor, um, and the, the fact is that it, that a sign, while it may help, there's sign fatigue, there's just too many of them. But those flashing signs do work.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then the other issue is junk yards, and let's just keep it, keep it on the agenda.
Yeah.
I mean, we have one, one property that has, Brendan counted, there's more than fifty cars on one property.
Yeah.
Wow.
The only, well, that's, we'll get into that discussion now, but that's a situation where everybody has to be treated equal.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, the certified letters have to go out at the exact same time.
With no zoning, can't you just have a junkyard?
No, because there's state, state junkyard ordinance, the third car triggers a junkyard.
Okay, all the cars.
And you need a license to have a junkyard?
There's screening, luggage, you need a, you need a permit and you also have to do screening.
And there's no permits here.
No, no, but the state issues it. You have to, and.
But I don't think, I don't think we have state-approved junkyards in Cavendish.
No, we don't.
So the state, do they enforce that?
No. No, they don't anymore.
Jeez.
They used to.
That's a really tough situation because you're dealing with personalities.
Is there a way to change, from, from what I understand is, is like, nothing's been, it hasn't been enforced, so it's hard to start enforcing it now. Can you update those, that ordinance to, to have it be, you know, hey, this is going to go in effect one year from now, we're gonna clamp down on it
It could be part of the site.
and send it to everyone and say.
Could it be part of site plan review?
Be site plan review for the, for the property changing hands? What do you mean?
No, what I'm talking about is that for permitting, we talked about, you know, the site plan regulations.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, is, could that be part of also, what, what we're talking, can it be incorporated some way?
In a subdivision regulations?
Subdivision, that's what I'm at, yeah.
Maybe for like proposed.
Yeah, the, but, you know, the, with property values the way they are, very, very, very few people are going to buy a piece of property and turn it into a junkyard. It's, the junkyards are generational properties inevitably where they are. There's a few exceptions.
But the thing, the thing that I always go back to is that if you take, um, and I'll just use a specific example. If you take somebody like the Golden Stage Inn.
Yes, yes.
You know, it's like, you know, if years ago, it must have been thirty years ago, there was a, um, a woman that was subjected to a home invasion in Cavendish and they, and the, the two boys that broke in, they wanted ten thousand dollars and the community, you know, in order, from, to extract from this old lady. And the community was absolutely outraged. And yet you can devalue a person's property.
Very much so.
By, by tens of thousands of dollars. And for people in Cavendish, they don't have stocks and bonds, that is their equity. The equity in their house is their life savings, what they pass on to their children, it's all they have. And it's just like, it just seems like it's a, it literally is a crime to, to, to extract that much money from your neighbors.
I agree, yeah, because it makes their property either unsalable or just devalued so much. You know, it is almost like the junkyard, they're almost, it's like, it's like they're, um, have their own zoning, you know? It's like the same thing, it's like they're controlling what their neighbors can do, kind of.
Mm-hmm. Well, I, I, I don't know what the answer is. I mean, I've been, I've been on the select board for four years and from the very first day I was on the board, I've been trying to get things done and nobody wants to touch it. And it's just like, when it exists, I mean, you know, just look at what's happened to Gassetts.
Yeah.
On that road that goes to Springfield. I mean, it's like, you know, it's like a junkyard mall.
Yeah.
What, um, what authority does the town have? Like, what, what can they do?
We have a junkyard ordinance. It's actually been in effect since the early seventies.
Yeah, but like nothing's happened, like, is it fines, is it like liens on the property?
There are, there are, there are fines, uh, uh, attached to it upon being presented with, um, the violation. You have a certain amount of time and then they start putting fines on in.
It's a daily fine.
Yeah, yeah. You know where, um, uh, last house here, where, uh, just down from you.
The big guy?
Huh? No, across the road.
Oh, okay.
What, what was her name that lived there forever? Polish name.
Oh, um, I thought it was Carlisle in the store.
No, one right up from there.
Oh.
Remember the junkyard that was behind there?
Yeah.
He had, he had forty-five cars, um, down there and Rich dumped that in my lap and said, do what you can to get rid of these, but he was renting. And I called the landlord who owned the property in Connecticut and said, you know, he has these cars. I'm sure you know about it. And she said, yes, I, yes, I know, I, he, he's trying to, he's trying to sell them off. I said, well, you know, they're leaking fluids and the, and then the water flows down into the river. Said, you don't want to own that property when there's, it's determined that it's polluted with transmission fluid, engine oil and antifreeze because you're not gonna be able to afford to repair the damage. And, um, within, within three months, all those cars are gone. Hodgson Brothers came up and took them all away. There's not a car there now. Hey, Gabransky.
Gabransky, yeah, yeah, right.
Yeah, 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 got rid of forty cars in one fell swoop that way. Over, over water quality issues and fear because she, it wasn't a generational house. She said, if I don't do something about this, I'm gonna lose my investment in the property and possibly face severe penalties for, uh, you know, digging up soil and bringing in contaminated soil and having to bring in more. And it worked that time, that way.
Are there ways to get the state in for environmental issues or?
Oh, yes, yeah, they'll come in with a heavy hand.
Yeah.
But they're not gonna, they're not gonna pay for anything.
Yeah, but is that something that, you know, it seems like an opportune time where new town manager, um, like, hey, let's start enforcing it.
You, you have.
I was thinking the same thing.
You, you have to really, really watch yourself. Junk is personal with a lot of people. Very, very personal.
Quickly turns to art.
And, and, yeah, and if you don't apply, apply the law really evenly, a lot of times it's not cars too, that's the junk. It's broken backos and in the case of one in Proctorsville, it's, who knows what it is? But it represents value to the individual.
Yeah.
He, he's positive he's going to, uh, he's already retired, but he's possible, he, he's positive he's gonna corner the market on scrap aluminum. He never does. It's been going on for thirty years.
But if we have this ordinance in place, like, how, how do you do anything about it? Like, what is that, what is that step?
I think your first step, if this ordinance is really written in the seventies, is to make sure it's still a legal ordinance. In some ways.
We haven't, it's, you know, it's in the.
I saw it in the book.
It's in the ordinance book.
I haven't read through that one individually yet.
No.
I've glanced through it, but sometimes those older ones, you're gonna have to make sure that they're.
But like we've talked, like I, I said before, that is enforced by the select board, not by the planning commission.
And is it, is that ordinance drafted by the select board or the planning commission?
The select board. That's a, that, that becomes a police matter. Now, that's, that's the, that's their responsibility. Whether they choose to act on it is the issue, but.
Can it be something the planning commission?
No.
One stop date, no?
Nope.
You could if they were zoning, but.
Yeah.
Okay, it's just before eight. Um, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second?
Okay.